Well, hello, everybody. Today, we're having a special meeting agenda for the Public Works Commission. Today's February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and welcome. South Pasadena Public Works Commission Statement of Civility. As your elected governing board, we will treat each other, members of the public and city employees with patience, civility, and courtesy as a model of sane behavior. We wish to reflect in South Pasadena for the conduct of all city business and community participation. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of South Pasadena community and not for personal gain. On public participation accessibility pursuant to section three, the executive order issued by Governor Newsom, the Special Meeting of the Public Works Commission, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, will be conducted remotely and held by video conference. This special meeting will be conducted remotely only and will not be physically present in the council chambers. To maximize public safety while still maintaining transparency and public access, members of the public can observe the meeting via Zoom. And you can go through your Zoom or you can call in. There's various different options that are being scrolled. Public comments, the public commission, the Public Works Commission welcomes public input. Public comments will be taken live in one or two formats in person or via Zoom. Members of the public may submit their comments in writing for Public Works Commission's consideration by emailing their comments to the designated email address. Public comments must be received by twelve P M on the twenty-fourth to ensure adequate time to compile and post. Written public comments will not be read out loud during the meeting. With that said, I will hand it off to Reina to do the call to order, the roll call.
Hello, thank you so much. Vice Chair Malley.
I am present.
Commissioner Katania.
Present.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Trevino is not here at the moment. He is trying to log on and is not being successful. But he is currently not present or in the meeting. City Council Liaison Evelyn Snyder.
Here.
Steph Liaison H Ted Gerber.
Here.
And I am President, Public Works Management Assistant, Reina Salazar Martin.
Great. With that said, we'll do our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Great. Wonderful. Already discussed the public comments and suggestions. With that said, I'm going to hand it off to you, Ted, to the open discussions accordingly.
Sure, Reina, do we have to do anything else with public comment or is that is that sufficient?
We do not have any public comment for this evening.
Terrific. Okay, we'll move right into the discussion items then. Thank you, Vice Chairman Malley. So some brief items to discuss. Staff will be working on the Public Works Commission annual report and offer the opportunity for any of the commissioners to contribute to that process and to review the contents of the report. And then we will bring that back to the commission for review and adoption. And then sometime later this year, there'll be an opportunity to present that to council either through a council meeting or perhaps a commissioner's Congress to briefly explain the achievements of the commission for the previous year, two thousand twenty-one. Are there any questions or comments on the annual report, two thousand twenty-one?
Comments.
Great. So I'm going to move on to number three, strategic plan review and development of the two thousand twenty-two work plan. So I'm briefly going to show you the strategic plan that was adopted by council in December, in December, two thousand twenty-one. And there are six items, six goals in the strategic plan. However, for public, the Public Works Department, we're focusing on the fourth goal, which is enhance community sustainability through investment in infrastructure and environmental management programs. And so as we construct our work plans for two thousand twenty-two, we will use the strategic plan as a guide in developing what types of things we'll be working on to the Public Works Commission. And so you can see here, we'll have more items than is shown here, but our priority items will be the ones that council has dictated as the priorities for all commissions. And for us, that is implementing the Integrated Water Resources Plan, the One Water Plan that we'll actually be reviewing this evening. Let's see what else we have on here. Bringing forward a comprehensive capital improvement plan. So we were just kicking off the budget process. And so we'll be talking about the capital improvement program in this commission during this fiscal year. Conducting an assessment of city facilities to determine repair costs and enhancing security measures and space planning. So that's an item that we'll be discussing in the coming months as well. And then pursuing electrification of a city fleet. That's also some initiatives that you'll be hearing about through the Public Works Commission. And so with one of the changes that's been recommended for work plans for all commissions this year is to realign them with the fiscal year. And so we will actually have a fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three work plan. In the meantime, we're, we expect to construct a interim work plan for the next few months to carry us to the end of the fiscal year. But we expect all this to be, all this would be sort of fostered out in the next couple of months as we, as we consider commission reorganization. There was a, there was a meeting, special meeting last night with the city council to discuss possible reorganization of the commissions. We don't expect any changes to this commission as of yet. But the one change we do expect is to realign our work plan with the fiscal year. So more on that to come. Any questions or comments on the strategic plan or the work plan for two thousand twenty-two? Okay, thank you. So I think we'll jump on to selection of officers. So it's a municipal code requirement to select officers within the first quarter of the year by March thirty-first. Given the previous last night's proposed commission reorganization, we recommended to hold off to selection of officers until March. So we will do that during our regular March meeting. We'll proceed with a selection of officers for two thousand twenty-two for this commission. Any questions about that item?
We're still scheduled for March ninth for our next meeting.
Yes, still scheduled for March.
Great. Let's go to action items there.
I'll let you take this, Reina.
Hi. Okay, so the first action item is the minutes for the special meeting we had on November eighth with a voice roll call. I'll go ahead and make that the motion to approve the minutes of Vice Chair Malley.
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Kataya.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes, please.
And since Commissioner Charles Trevino is still trying to log on, but isn't successful, he is not in the meeting. So with a unanimous voice vote of three to zero, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Reina. I'll move on to our main action item for the evening, the One Water Twenty Fifty Plan and Sewer System Management Plan. So we reviewed this at our special meeting last week and gave a a fairly low-level comprehensive presentation. We'll give a quick presentation tonight and go through the plan. And then if there's any discussion or questions, we can answer those. And then we'll recommend that you move to recommend to the council to adopt this plan. So I'll start off by just showing you the staff report here. So there was several goals to the plan with the ultimate goal being projecting out a capital improvement program, infrastructure for the water, sewer and stormwater systems for the next thirty years, as well as giving the city some recommendations about projects they can do, some operations and maintenance improvements. And then also providing the city with a water system hydraulic model and a sewer system hydraulic model. So the chapter one goes over the purposes and objectives of the One Water Plan. Again, like I said, to establish a capital improvement program, also to develop projections for water supply and water demand, and then base the capital improvement program and the infrastructure recommendations on what the capacity needs are going to be for the city over the next thirty years. Chapter two focuses on some land use and inputs to the plan and evaluating what the projected populations will be. It takes a look at two different evaluations. The Southern California Association of Governments or SCAG, which is what's used in the general plan projection. And then also the housing numbers, the Rena projection. They're different. And so the plan utilizes both in its evaluation. The SCAG projection essentially shows a balance between water conservation and development. So there's a steady increase, whereas the Rena projection shows a sharp increase because it increases in development and then tapers off. And so in chapter three, you'll see that water supply needs and demand for the next thirty years are evaluated against both the Rena numbers and the SCAG numbers. And they basically take two different approaches of considering the land use growth and the population growth. And this plan focuses on using land use growth in determining what its demand is. Chapter four basically sets up the criteria to build the hydraulic models. And so when we're building a hydraulic model, we have different outputs that we desire, like understanding what our average day demand is, what we need every day, and then our peak hour demand. This is something like, you know, how much water is used at the, at the maximum by the community at a certain time during the day. The maximum day demand, meaning like how much is used, not the average day demand, but the maximum that we've used each day. And then one of the more important ones is the maximum fire flow demand. So an instantaneous demand, knowing what's the absolute extent of what the water system needs to accommodate so that it can reach that. It can reach that critical number in order to provide both the maximum data man and the, and the high fire flow demand at the same time. And so that's what we're aiming to accomplish with this plan is accommodating of the needs on those four dimensions, I guess I'll say. And in doing that evaluation, the plan takes a look at all of these different factors, such as system pressure, velocity, volume, the capacity of our pump stations, and then the capacity of our pressure reducing valves.
But I have a question.
Yes.
How, how would they determine when we're in a drought period? Or do they take that into consideration as we have been in the past and are currently?
They do, they take that into consideration. So in, in chapter five, they talk about water supply sources. And they take a look at what, what the city has historically used from pumping our main basin and then also from purchase from metropolitan water or from a very small about from Pasadena Water and Power for a very small section of the city. And so in for example, I'll give you the case of our, our urban water runoff plan, which is, is referenced in this plan, I believe. In terms of the urban water runoff plan, it, it discusses the drought based on a climate model. And it takes a look at a couple of different projections of like a moderately dry future or a moderately wet future based on different climate models. And based on the climate model, it determines whether, whether the city will have enough water in the future based on that climate model. And what the urban water management plan found was, yes, it does, but it also depends on the regional planning, water effort for water. So depending on Metropolitan's projections and depending on the San Gabriel Basin's projections, the city will have enough water based on its prescriptive pumping rights and water that it purchases. So it does address those types of factors, but it's not, it's not so centric just to focus on the city. It relies on the outside resources under different drought conditions. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, no, it does. It absolutely does. Thank you.
Terrific. And so continuing chapter five, I showed the previous demand there. And then there's another chart here that basically shows the previous demand with respect to our groundwater pumping rights. The additional pumping we will do over our rights, water that we purchase, and then showing what those projections are. And so we can continue to expect to have the same production rate. And then continue also purchase water. And the idea is that water purchasing can be reduced with new water conservation efforts that come about. And then water can be reduced as we reuse stormwater within the city for irrigation uses instead of using potable water. So chapter six is the big chapter. It basically takes a look at the water system and does a very comprehensive hydraulic model. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Snyder.
Yes, I have a question on how much does it cost for us to purchase water from Metro?
That's a great question. I believe it's about twelve hundred dollars an acre foot for Metropolitan, which is very expensive compared to several hundred dollars an acre foot, which it would have cost us to pump from our groundwater basin and then, you know, treated and actually distribute it into our system. So Metropolitan water is already finished water, already treated and delivered to the west side of the city. We actually have a Metropolitan connection around this area right here. Whereas the water that we pump out of the San Gabriel Basin to the east and then we treat it ourselves and then pump it into the city and distribute it. It's actually cheaper for us to do that than it is to purchase Metropolitan's finished water, a lot cheaper. And so in fact, we'll actually, we may lease water when we, when we want to over pump the basin, we may lease from other other agencies that also pump from the basin versus purchasing Metropolitan water because it could be cheaper based on the leasing rates. But it's a very great, it's a very good question.
Thank you.
Do we sell our water as well?
We have in the past. So since we pump more than we, since we, we have to pump more than we are allowed, but then we have the right to pump, I guess you could say. We usually pay, we usually pump everything we can and then we pay more to pump this orange area. But in the past, there have been years where we couldn't pump our water. For example, in these years, we were still building these new treatment systems because of groundwater contamination that happened. So in the years, years since we didn't pump our water, we actually sold it to another, well, we leased it to another agency who pumped it and treated it. And, you know, we use other, other water from Metropolitan. So yeah, it's a good question also. It doesn't happen often because we usually need everything we can get. Occasionally, when we can't use those wells, we'll sell that water or lease that water rather.
Thank you.
So in chapter six, it goes over the hydraulic system and evaluates all those factors we talked about earlier. Is there enough fire flow from the hydrants? Is there enough pressure throughout the system? And what you're seeing here is no, these aren't the new redistricting that you're seeing here. These are the zones, the pressure zones in the, in the city. So you've got the central zone right here in orange, the beleke zone in green. And then you have the Raymond zone up here and the let me see here, I'm sorry, this is the Pasadena zone, yeah, there it is. This is the Pasadena zone, just a very small area that we purchased water from Pasadena and supply these residents because of the geography. The fifth zone is really hard to see. It's this little tiny zone right here. And the reason that zone was established is because the, the, the pressures in the central zone weren't high enough to accommodate this area. And so what this study found was that there are low pressures through the downtown area. And with increased development, that might be, can continue to be a problem. So what this plan is, is recommending, and let me zoom down here real quickly, is actually expanding this magnolia zone. Because if you were to supply this neighborhood, obviously, these neighborhoods with the central zone, the pressure is, is a little bit too low. And if you're connected to this higher Raymond's own, the pressures would be too high. So this is expanding this middle zone to bring the pressures up in the downtown area. And this is a big component of what the plan is recommending to undertake within the next few years to make some changes to valves and pipelines in this area to re-pressurize this zone. And we're calling this the magnolia repressurization, basically. That's important conclusion from this chapter. So chapter seven really deals with recycled water and the city doesn't have a recycled water system. But this does a feasibility analysis on whether a recycled water system would be cost benefit for the city. And so there was a question in our last session about stormwater being considered for recycled water. And that is covered in the stormwater chapter in very small pockets about where stormwater can be collected and reused for irrigation. But this chapter is largely about, you know, purchasing recycled water from another facility. For example, the Pasadena Power Plant just north of the city. And then it takes a look at what would be some of the users of that recycled water? What are some large demand areas? And Caltrans, the golf course is a large user, Caltrans, some of the parks and schools. But ultimately, what this chapter found, and it actually went through a couple of scenarios here, you can see about what a recycled water system could look like. Here's one, one example. But ultimately, what the chapter found was that the, the rate for water right now isn't at a level where it makes sense to expend a lot of capital resources to build a recycled water system. Right now, the price of potable water is, is low enough to accommodate it. But, you know, given restrictions in the future and the price of water going up, a recycled water system could be feasible in the future. Yes. Oh, I think Councilmember Snyder, I think you're on mute.
Sorry. If we attempt to start to comply with arena numbers, that means we are constructing more ADUs and affordable housing. How would that affect the, the recycled water that's affordable right now? And do we need then to to reach out to that stormwater to accommodate more population density?
It's a, it's a very good question. It's not, it's not clear just yet how that will, what that will look like. Let me see if I can show you the summary table here. So here's some numbers. They're a little bit difficult to translate. But, you know, as, as there's more development in the city and there's more demand on the water system, this plan predicts that the demand for water will sharply increase with all of this new development. But then it will likely decrease because of the state's water conservation measures. So it thinks there may be an increase in water demand, but then a decrease, so kind of a level off. But we don't fully understand what the price of water will be just yet. We do have a new water rate study that will be starting soon to, to set the rates for the next few years. And that rate study will take into consideration the cost of water, which is going up, especially with the types of assessments that we have to pay to replenish the groundwater basin. Costs will probably go up for developer, for developers because there's impact fees for expanding the water system for those ADUs. And then costs will go up actually because of this one water plan. It's recommending such a large investment in water infrastructure for the next thirty years that some of that will have to be, you know, some of that will be paid for through rate adjustments. So once we understand what, what rate adjustments will happen and what the cost of water will be in the future, then we can return back to this recycled water analysis and see, you know, what's feasible as far as like irrigation demands in the city to utilize recycled water or even tap into some of our stormwater projects to supply this recycled purple pipe water. So hopefully that gives a little bit of guidance.
The follow-up, who sets the impact fees for the developers?
So I'm not sure who, who has set it in the past, but our goal was to have it reconsidered in this new water rate study to reconsider what the current impact fee is. So as we go through that study, we will present that to council. And then if council adopts those water rates, then I believe they'll be able to adopt those impact fees as well.
Thank you.
Of course.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so moving on to the sewer chapter, we're almost through the plan here, sewer chapter number eight. So the sewer chapter takes a look at the condition of the sewer system. And you could see here, we'll probably change the colors here because it's a little difficult to see all the different kinds of blues. But everything in blue is in good to average to mediocre condition. And then the things in orange and red are in poor condition. So you can see largely the systems in good to average condition, mainly because a lot of improvements were made over the last about a decade or so ago when there was a consent decree in the sewer system. But there are some improvements to be made. The plan found that largely the capacity of the system is sufficient, meaning the size of it. It doesn't need to be enlarged for, in any significant way. But there are some areas of the system about two and a half miles in the immediate future that need to be replaced or relined. And so you can see those elements here. So along with this master plan, we're also adopting our sewer system management plan, which is a state requirement every five years. And it's basically an operations and maintenance plan for the sewer system. And so it's a long plan that talks about the sewer system and how our emergency procedures work. But the main thing I'll point out is that we have a process in place to both prevent sewer system overflow, so sewage overflows. And then also if they're to happen to mitigate them. And so we have a flow chart basically for emergency call out. And then we've identified different responsibilities from our crew and then also on-call contractors to assist with, you know, a sewer backup or a cleanup scenario. If we have to say, for example, disinfect an area that had a sewer overflow. So again, our goal is to prevent those, but we have a mitigative plan, which is required by the state, and that's included here also. Okay, I'll move on to.
Ted, I have a question to Charles Trevino.
Oh, hi, Commissioner Trevino, how are you?
I'm having a little difficulty getting on, but yeah, on, on the meeting, thank you. You know, today we voted to approve this half a million dollar request for Metropolitan to be able to put on their board agenda. The, the pilot program. The uh the uh pilot program to uh help uh south passing it with the MS four and mitigate some of that. Is this part of what we're talking about here?
Um it's not yet, so um it's actually a great time to talk about that because I was I was getting into the stormwater chapter here, chapter nine, so. Um this is an overview of the city um and the large uh capital. Uh stormwater projects that are planned. And all of the projects you see here are actually in the um measured W safe clean water program funding process. Um and so we have three uh sub s- stormwater storm shed areas of the city. That are are in that process and I'll and I'll get to your question in one moment, um Commissioner Trevino. But um you could see here, we have plans uh for stormwater projects along the Rio Seco. Um because the city is is basically divided up into um a handful of of watersheds. There's this kind of this area right here, which drains um to the west, the Rio Seco. And then this area here drains to the south into uh Los Angeles. Um this area here um drains also to the south towards Alhambra. And then this area here, very tiny area of the city, um drains towards the El Hambor Wash into the Rio Hondo. And so though we've largely, um the idea here is that we've largely captured large um areas of the city. Uh to process and treat stormwater and then either reuse it or reinject it. Um these are, these are big projects um that will take years to build and and to years to fund and to build. Whenever we have an opportunity um moving forward to make um. Small local improvements in stormwater to capture that water and either reuse it or inject it. We're looking to make those types of improvements, so the project that Commissioner Trevino is talking about is. We we are in a plan right now to um possibly install. Uh electric vehicle chargers in in and around City Hall to support future fleet electrification. And so when we were looking at this project, we thought, well, we're gonna be doing a lot of trenching work and and um. You know, opening up the ground and regrading. Um and some curb and gutter work in order to do that, and so we thought, well, there's an opportunity here um to perhaps. Install a local stormwater collection system when we're doing this work. And so then we we reached out to a consultant and we um partnered with Metropolitan Water District in terms of looking at that project. And we have a a.